He's been from the last truck, he's still on the committee, so he's very familiar, he's been to the plant.
And the reason I ask, that, that particular truck takes four personnel to operate it.
The, the standard is four, uh, we're still at two. And we're not the only ones to take a lot of departments to go through, NFPA is four in that truck, we're still at two.
But we have the capacity.
We, we. It's a two thousand GPM pump, I may be getting ahead of you. We, we had an option, last one was fifteen hundred GPM, uh, they hit us up and we could go with a two thousand GPM, a little larger pump for the same price, and could put a large diameter discharge on it, to where the, what we hook up to the hydrant, the five inch hose, we could actually hook up to the truck, they pump from the truck, so if we had a real long delay, we could put that truck in between it. Get more water pumped in, boost the pressure, boost the volume, and still on with two thousand GPM. It is the comments, I think it's the way it's four fifty-four. I added much of this, if y'all need to just move on, I'm not trying to hold you up, because I know y'all came here on a special meeting, but, but I want to give you all the information, we'll be all LED lights, no halogen or anything, they probably would have done away with all that. So the lights last a long time.
I've seen a thousand gallons.
That'd be the, the tank, yes, yes, be a thousand gallon tank.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, she, but these new, uh, diesel trucks as, uh, they call it diesel commission, the death system.
Yes, sir.
And, and has, uh, has your crew adjusted to that type of, uh?
Yes, sir.
You know, because of operating.
Yes, sir, they know exactly what diesel put in it, you don't want any low sulfur, they need, no off-road diesel needs to go in them, that's just gonna mess them up, they know keep the death fluid in them, and they know the regen process on them when they regens and everything, so yeah, they're very familiar. We used to use, we used to, we're able to do some off-road diesel, but to keep from causing confusion on some old trucks compared to new trucks, we just sit there and said, no more off-road diesel, to keep from messing the engine down.
Now, uh, that regen process is what I was most particularly concerned about, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other question, I noticed you were gonna redo the spec today, you talked about the safety, I saw on television where a fire truck got it, that's been, uh, made, seems like it has some insurance, safety issues, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's why we go with, uh, custom instead of commercial. Because you're, the chances of living through a wreck in a custom is a whole lot greater than living through, going into a wreck in a commercial. It's basically a, a crash cab, the cabs are built to provide crashes, and there's a lot of footage and specs on it. Ricks, Little Rock, having that long, with two Little Rocks hit, basically hit on, at the end of the broken foot out of all of them.
Okay, Chief, Chief, will it have a homeboy generator, that's my next question.
This one here.
It will have a backup inside cameras, uh.
Generator.
Oh, generator, no, no generator.
Your generator on this one?
No, dear, thanks for hearing.
Which was what we've done on the last ones, we just.
Sir?
It won't be, it'll have a part that for us to put a portable one on, that will run the lights, it won't be built in, the one on three forty-three was built in, and I really didn't like that, because it's not a quick change, it's a quick fixture, it tears up or whatever, you can't swap it out right quick. And right now, we've got a generator, when you run the truck, it's sitting there spinning and running, because it's hydraulic fluid. And we had to disconnect stuff, and it just sits there and spins, if it ever locks up, we're gonna have a major fix. And we had to put a portable one on it, so I, we really didn't want to go back to that.
I, I, I just flipped the inspection, I just got a no show, two, three things, yeah, that's my question, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You have more presentation?
That's it, that's all.
That's pretty well it is.
I can look at pictures and chat in the chat room, she did.
And, and have these been sent to each of the, all the person on this one?
Yes, sir.
No, but this was done today.
I just got these today, so.
Alright.
Got these specs today, so.
The only thing I think that may not have, I think the last minute on Sunday, or whatever, I got to you, you requested a, another proposal that actually said, and listed, and talked about the two percent or whatever, and I sent that. The last thing, uh, I sent to you.
I think the last, the last one, looked like it said that it was a few percent discount.
And it actually said it on there.
Is it different from this one? It was more than that, on my packet.
This was, I ended up getting this at the last minute on Sunday, I think I sent it to you at night. All, it's, it's basically just like your other proposal, the only difference is that he actually put on here about the discount, so it's in writing, and there's no doubt that there is gonna be a discount, I'll let y'all pass that around.
But, but I think the question was, did not get answered, was, was, yeah, uh, the last vote had a price on it, total purchase price, and there's two percent discount that will give towards any amount paid now at all times, total purchase price. There's, there's nothing, anything further about guaranteed delivery date, or, or, or clause that provision is basically, or at least on that basis, I think that's the last one we've got, right?
I guess you want, you want me to do a quick overall right quick, that'll maybe help bring things together?
On, on the sheet that I got, it talks about, Jim, it said discount prepaid.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think the question was that, if the prepaid for, I think the vote was the prepaid half.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, uh, you could even prepaid more. The question is, well, if you prepaid, do they still have an incentive to finish it? After you, after, after you prepaid, you know, the, the set there, um, so, so we don't have confirmation, we know it's still be working, we still have the date, but we don't have any kind of like guarantee, that says that it's not done by this date, then, um, you know, we get even bigger discount, or except, it's just, it's just normal two percent discount purchase, and we still got a deduction date, and we still got, you know, their, uh, guarantee promised to get it done.
Okay.
But if we didn't get there, there was additional email, I think we were trying to get, uh, maybe clear up this last amount.
Yeah, Alder, Alder and Lindsey, it came up with a good idea, that, when he came up with that, I said, yeah, that's a winner. Uh, we can pay what we want to, as long as we pay over a hundred thousand, we're gonna get a two percent discount. I thought you could even go lower, and he said, no, a hundred percent, just wrote on it, piece of paper. Uh, the suggestion was made, we're looking at five hundred and forty-two thousand. If we prepaid five hundred thousand, with the two percent discount, we're looking at ten thousand dollar discount, that means you still owe thirty-two thousand. And just hold the thirty-two thousand as payment when you finally get the truck. That's incentive, that's leverage, which we've never had no problem, but it is, it's incentive, it's leverage, the whole nine yards. They'll put out a bond, now, the things I'm telling you will all be in writing before you ever write a check, this is, all we're accomplishing right now is just to let him put the proposal in, and then we're locked in. And we don't have to write them a check for a dime until December the third, I mean, August the thirty-first. That's when, by August thirty-first, we have to write it. But, to make, to keep from getting that two percent, there's a two percent increase in the price of the truck, which is gonna be almost eleven thousand, August first. If you don't buy before August first, the truck's gonna go up almost eleven thousand dollars. There's another increase coming in February, it'll either be three to five percent, so that's that, but you'll also, if you do it before, not only say the two percent increase in price, if you go on whatever you pay, you're gonna get two percent off that whatever you prepaid. But if, we do like the suggestion with the five hundred thousand, I'll take ten thousand off, we'll owe thirty-two. We can wait and pay the thirty-two at the end, all you're gonna end up is about six hundred and forty dollars of savings that you'll lose, but for a half a million dollars, it's probably worth having that dangling out there left. They'll do a commercial bond on the money you send to protect your money, they'll also say that they would put penalty clause in it. Now, we would have to come to an agreement, I don't have anything, but once we get ready, before we write a check, we can get a penalty clause, we can say, hey, if that truck ain't here, and I told you, January two thousand twenty-three, and he said, yes, he didn't see that, he had a problem, that's eighteen months. If it ain't here by January two thousand twenty-three, there'd be a penalty clause in there, that will cost them, I don't know what the cost would be, or, or whatever, so.
Something they would have to agree to.
Yes, sir.
So, so are we?
Before we wrote the check.
I understand.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, so are we still trying to do this before August first?
That's why we're here right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and the way, and ordinance is, is consistent with what the plan was, which makes sense, it was paying fifty percent. So, and that, that's the ordinance is set up for, it's paying fifty percent, but then we've got, we just don't make change there.
And, and let me get three or four things, since we were on that, I like to say, I was, poor Cecil.
Got a mic, so.
Uh, about the penalty thing, I, you know, I was thinking of something, hey, they're, they, to incentivize them, uh, if you've got a construction contract that falls over, over time, there's usually a clause, I, I don't know, I just picked a number, I said, it'll be a thousand dollars a month if they delay us, but now, I would think they'd agree to that, they, they're guaranteeing this delivery, so that shouldn't be a problem, I think we ought to write it in there.
That's very mild.
Uh, I don't know whether, Michael, would you say we need to add that into the ordinance, amend it to say that, or just say that that's part of the finishing?
I, I think the question would be the budget, it's gotta be amended, to whatever amount they want to pay.
Right, okay.
And then we would have the contract done, it sounds like filed first, which means we would actually have the actual written contracts that would be done August first, and then that have a clause in it, or penalty.
Now, you said we didn't have to write a check till August thirty-first.
We don't have to sign, before August first, we have to accept the proposal.
Okay.
We don't have to sign the contract to the end of August and make our payment then, and we'll get a discount for whatever payment we make.
Okay.
We have the window on the payment, but we have to agree before August first, that we are going to get a truck.
We're to write the contract.
And, in essence, this meeting is to get the contract going, and our regular meeting, we should decide how much we would want to pay toward that. We should have, that should be one of the ordinances that we have on the table by then.
Well, we've got one here.
You know, I mean, when, when they say place the order by August, by, by August first, and that's us agreeing that we wanna buy.
That's agreeing, he's gonna put in, you are gonna buy the, buy a truck, you are gonna buy the truck, so that.
And I, right, so I think at that point, we gotta have the contract that has the penalty in it.
And so our authorization to vote on this tonight would be to say, that's supposed to be in the contract, so, just work at it, and be sure about that payment date.
Be sure.
I have a, another question I wanted to ask, okay, now, what you were showing us here was your two thousand and sixteen truck that you purchased.
Yes.
Okay, so, and that one's still good and operating, you're, you're buying one that's very similar to that, and gonna retire this, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, what are you gonna do with the ninety-nine model?
Well, we've got a choice, we've got a ninety-nine and the two thousand, the guys kicking back and forth, and we're still passionate amongst ourselves, which one of them needs to go? One of them will be a backup truck, say one for a backup truck. I say the two thousand needs to go, they can try to convince me otherwise, I'm scared of the two thousand and the rust issues that have been underneath it, and trouble we've had with frames, front ends, the E two just had a new engine put in it, not.
But what are you gonna do with it, I, I don't know if you're talking about scrapping it out, or scrap metal, or?
No, 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 we can sell, they'll take it in on trading for five thousand dollars, but we can get more than that for it.
Okay, alright.
A lot of cavities and stuff.
That's what I wanted to see, so we'll, we'll try to sell it with all the apparatus and stuff on it, or do you take all the?
We'll take the equipment.
You'll take the equipment?
Some available on this other truck.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The, the two thousand that you were referring to, that's the one we bought used, that had all the rust is, rust issues that we had to send off, and, yeah, that thing has been a nightmare from day one.
So, my, my next question is saying, okay, now, I'm trying to think, a ladder truck had come up in some previous discussions, and we're basically taking two years' worth of equipment money to, to go on and do this one, and that maybe, is the ladder truck gonna hold up, or we gonna get a big surprise next year?
I, I don't, I don't foresee that, the ladder truck, we, we being, Jared, Assistant Chief Cureford, that's over the trucks, and he couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, we discussed that the other day, and I said, you know, maybe we may have to get even up to ten years more out of it, you think we can do it, and he said, yeah, not saying that we may not hit a year, we'd spend fifty thousand on it, or whatever. But, in the long period, I mean, that truck right now, the replace is about one and a half million dollars. So, we know we're gonna have to stretch out a little. But, it doesn't, they fuel it every week, we drive it out and fuel it every week, we pull it out every morning and operate it, but it's not running up and down the road. I mean, it gets drove down the road every week for fuel, just to be sure it's cycling and everything, but it's run every day, everything's checked on it. Thursdays, they totally go through the ladder and everything, operational, look at the ladder and everything, but, yeah.
Let, let me, uh, say whatever, I, I took a minute this afternoon to call a trusted friend who's familiar with this stuff, named Jim Green, and I asked him, I said, let me run this thing by you, just, I said, do you see any hiccups in, in what we're talking about doing, I said, we've had to do these kind of things before shoveling money, he said, no, it looked like a good use of our funds, to him, because we're turning a half a percent on the money in the bank, and we'll save two percent on this, and, and the price increases, so it really, it's.
Really turning into five, six percent.
Probably the right thing to do financially, uh, and so, you know, I felt good, uh, uh, getting his, uh, uh, opinion on it. So, I, I want to make the motion, uh, to amend this, or I will do it formally in a minute, to, uh, to, instead of where it says, we're gonna pay one half at two hundred and seventy-one thousand, that we're gonna, just, we're gonna take the two percent discount, we're gonna pay five hundred thousand. Uh, between, we've got the money in the bank and, uh, drawing nothing, so, there's two places, let's see, maybe three, yeah, there's actually three places, two on the front page and one on the back page, uh, to change the two hundred and seventy-one thousand to five hundred thousand. And like I said, we'll get, get an surety bond or performance bond, that our money's safe, and I guarantee that they're gonna deliver it, and, uh, they'll have a penalty if they don't deliver it by January of twenty-three.
And, and are we in agreement and looking at, if they don't deliver it by January the first, twenty twenty-three, it's a thousand dollars per month?
Yep.
Each?
Yep.
Each month that you drag this out?
Alright, so, uh, let's see, did we get a second on this?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
No, no.
I, I think we, we, after looking at it, and, and I'm gonna wait, go, wait, he said, price of this truck, and I know you know, and he knows, this truck will be a million dollars worth of stuff.
We need the second before the discussion on that, right?
Well, I think he had made a.
I didn't know whether we had a second on my, uh, motion to approve.
Okay.
We did, okay.
Alright, go ahead, sir.
And that's, that's all I got, because, I mean, I'm buying parts every day, and they go through it. Before the pandemic, I'm paying fifty to seventy-five percent more for parts, and they steady going up, every, every day, every day.
Alright.
So, so, well, so I think the compromise was, what the, uh, hasn't made a motion to amend it yet, but, 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 how much, what is in discussion? The, uh, the capital fund, the fire truck, uh, expense fund, has in it right now, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and it's expected to have, you know, the half, about two seventy, by the time we had to make the payment, so that was, that was why it was spent up, we amended the budget for the, uh, truck fund to pay the half of the total amount, so, so, if capital wants to pay the whole amount, we've also got to, uh, transfer
Transfer.
from the general fund to the truck fund, basically an advance of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then, that whole five hundred be up for the payment, the two hundred and seventy will come back out of the truck fund and replenish for the general fund. Now, when I made the payment, well, we made the payment by August thirty-first, we were writing a check, so, you know, so, 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 so we're all amending the transfer funds from the general and loan into the, uh, truck fund.
Well, the, 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 the ordinance that we have here is amending the line item fifty-nine four forty.
Correct.
Which is, is not even on our twenty, twenty-one budget, that's a blank line.
No, no, that line's on there, it's just got zero one, it's just got zero.
My, well. My June financial, it doesn't even have the account number shown.
It might not be in there, because it is zero.
Well, that, that, that could be, I just, so. Uh, i- i- if, if it's general fund money, you know, it's what I'm saying, we, we've got, we can expense that line item, if we want to reimburse from that truck account into the general fund, we could, of course, we do it in August, now, if you think we've gotta amend that tonight, we need to come up with a little language to do that, but I'm thinking we could.
She said it won't show if it's zeroed out?
So, I've got, it's fifty-nine four forty, that's the account that has, that's the account that has two forty-eight, Lauren? The, the five nine four forty? So, we call it, so we've got truck, fund, that's from the separate line, that's the one that has two forty-eight.
That's one, 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 five, zero.
That's a different account, it's a sub-account of the general fund.
It's designated, or designated funds, really, yeah.
And restricted off the.
Restricted, right. But, my thinking was, and if I'm wrong, like I say, okay, do it right way, but, was that the general fund could spend that money on this line item if we wanted to.
That's correct.
Now, how we reimburse it?
That's correct.
Okay.
General fund.
So we don't have to amend the ordinance for that extra transfer?
I think we just say one, one transfer, uh, right now, the only amendment, that would be in section four, the operating regiment is going to add the sum of,
Five hundred.
And that says two seventy-one, to the fire department capital expense line fifty-nine four forty.
Correct.
And instead of, uh, instead, instead of amending the budget up to two seventy-one, we'll say up to, uh.
Now, it's add the sum of five hundred thousand.
I mean, you wanna say five hundred?
Yeah. That's what I'm locked into. Because, like I said, if they lock it right out of the budget line to zero, and we're gonna send a check for five hundred, so, we're amending it to that amount.
I would take it out of the general fund then, basically where that five hundred is coming from for right now.
And later in the year, we can transfer that two seventy out of the truck fund, and dress that up with whatever ordinance we need.
The general can go to the truck fund, the truck fund can't go to the general.
Right.
Or, or at least that two forty-eight is there, that's the tax money, that's restricted, uh, delegated just for capital, for compensation, so, the general fund can go ahead and say, we'll pay for the whole truck, that's fine, no problem.
Are you, are you saying we can't transfer back?
We can transfer back, not more than that amount.
Okay, okay, alright, gotcha, gotcha.
It, that, that money has to be used.
Okay.
Okay, now, that's what we agreed to years ago when we got it out, so, okay.
That's all we said, so I think the only motion that we need to make is somebody is on section three, no, sorry, section four, changing the numerals two seventy-one, three, three-nine, five hundred thousand.
I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the ordinance six twenty-one in three places. The, the one, two, three, four, five, sixth, whereas, on page one, where it says one half of the purchase price, five hundred thousand of the purchase price, being five hundred, and, the next whereas, uh, strike the two seventy-one and, and indicate five hundred thousand there, and on page two, section four, change the two hundred and seventy-one thousand to five hundred thousand either.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Is there a second? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you.
And may I just say yes for the record? Like I said, I, I wanna, I mentioned that whenever we have made emergency clauses and things like that, we have to be very mindful of, of that, we have to make sure that it is an emergency, and that's one of the things that I'm dealing with, with the state for August the twelfth, so, just wanna make it clear that we're making an exception at this time, because of the extenuating circumstances.
And I, I think we did, we also verified some things through the cooperative, uh, there's separate statutes that allows, uh, cities to work through, uh, the cooperative association, which is what the Houston Galveston is, and so, we can go through them, the competitive bidding has been satisfied, but if they went through the bidding process, we're gonna get it. So, since it's done through, there's HGAC, that's good, and we do have, uh, a membership contract for the mayor to sign, that, I will point out, that in, uh, line, section one, where the mayor's authorized the inter, being to an intermodal contract, uh, that's a contract, basically to be a member of the Houston Galveston area council, and take, and be a member of it, caught being a member costs, doesn't have any obligations or liability, it just makes one a member, and if in Arkansas, I think there's eighty to a hundred, I don't know, with, with all the counties, and all the.
Yes, they are.
You know, it might as well just take advantage, it's not obligated to buy anything through them, no extra obligation, other than work a member of the HGAC, and if we wanna buy something through them, they've already gone through the competitive bidding process. Uh, so I think that would be amended, to still leave a motion to suspend the rules, and then also a motion to approve, and a motion on the verge of loss.
Okay, the motion to suspend is the first motion that you, will entertain a motion to suspend.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for a third reading.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is any discussion on the motion to suspend? Roll call, please.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you. Lindsey?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
May I go on the record as a yes, please?
And I guess I need to make the motion that we invoke the emergency clause, is that?
Well, we got a motion to pass.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We changed it, so.
Make a motion that we approve the ordinance as amended.
Well, the motion, I has been properly seconded, is in the discussion. At this time, we have roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
May I go on the record as a yes, please? Um, the next motion is the motion to approve. Emergency, sorry, almost there.
I make a motion that we invoke the emergency clause.
It's been moved and properly seconded, we have any discussion on the emergency clause for this? Ordinance? We're ready now?
McCoy?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
And I'd like to go on the, uh, record for a yes, please. Is that everything, uh, we need, are, are there any, is there any other business before the call?
We just have one question before we go. Now, we'll be adding the, uh, well, what I call the penalty phase, what we talked about, in the contract when we come back into August, August week.
Right, so, so, I, I think what the capital's done is adjusted the budget.
Right.
Uh, authorized the mayor into, into the contract, he will still get the contract, and review it, and determine if still in the city's best interest. And this doesn't obligate him to do so, so, if he's on that private contract, after the chief reviews it, uh, doesn't mean we're gonna be adjusting, then he's gonna come down there. We're not forced to do it, at least the budget's amended, so he can at least, uh, review the contract.
We can do what we're supposed to. And I'll get all the opinions, so we don't waste any time.
Thank you so much, as it is in the best interest of the, uh, uh, citizens to be represented, how many absences do we get to have consecutively? How many do we get to have, how many absences, and representing the people as Alderman, how many absences do we get on a roll?
How do you get?
In a row, I think it's three in a row, right?
Not, not for this council.
Not, I'm not talking about for special council, for, for our, for our second Tuesday, do we?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, all of them are not required to be here.
Okay.
I, I think, yeah, I think the council can.
The council can make a decision.
Can, can make a decision, and make a request, and then make a determination on it, if you like.
Okay.
We went through it years ago.
The search will be on that.
There's not a rule, there's not a rule, I mean, it's three or anything like that.
Okay.
Case for case.
Right.
Are there any other business before the council?
Oh, I just have one. The lights, the basketball lights at Iver Clark Park were blinking, I didn't know if it was a single phaser or what, if it came on and it was going on and off.
They're blinking at Iver Clark?
Iver Clark, oh, maybe, I don't know if there's, maybe LED picture, is it the whole cluster, or a whole cluster? We just need to locate it somewhere.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, twenty-one out of the twenty-six lights that have been reported so far, have already been fixed by Integy throughout the city, and so, we're very happy about that. And the other five are in the works right now, so if a person, if you are at a street light that's out in your community, there's an SL number that's on there, if you call that number in to eight seven zero eight three seven five five seven zero, we check at night ourselves, and then we add it to the list, we, we can tie something around it, so they'll know that it's that light, but we want our city well lit, and whether that light works or not, we are charged each month for each of those, and it is imperative that all of them are working. Yes, sir?
Speaking of lights, the last two months, when we've exited the building, the lights on the front of the building have been out, and it's been pitch black, trying to go down those stairs in the rain, plus the street light across the street is out.
We've got them, we've got the two ordered, and got them ordered from wholesale, that is taking, taking time to get in.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
For the record, also, you can go in on your personal computer and put that SL number in.
Yeah, they don't mind your doing, and they, sometimes they'd rather you go through us, but, you, you can go on your own computer. Yeah, they don't mind your doing, and they, sometimes they'd rather you go through us, but you, you can go on your own computer and do it yourself as been stated.
It's through the city's website.
Oh, on our website, yeah, yeah, explore camden.com, yes, yes, yes.
It helps to, it helps to identify them, because one of the guys that may be working, he may see the tag on the pole, and he'll, he may not have that on his list. But he'll go ahead and fix it while he's there, so it, it helps to go ahead and.
In other words, when you go through us, we tie something around it so they don't have to look for it. They'll already know that we've already researched it. Is there anything else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had something I turned in back in March, and it's just, you have to turn it along.
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm a man down right this minute, but I will make a note of that, sir. Um, yes, sir, I'll give a call tomorrow. Thank you. Is there any more business before the council?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, thank you. That wasn't all.
Mayor, congratulations. May not go down next week.
Thank you. Holliday, thank you. Oh, I didn't see you. Oh, thank you for the more. Thank you. Hey, good job tonight.
Yeah, so.
This is another three.
This will be three in August.
And one in February.
With, with, until, until, uh, four. They've all been two, three, four percent.
Yeah, that's pretty high.